One minute over the 5:30 hour. So I would like to call the November 28, 2023 council meeting to order and I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Walden? Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
Mr. Chambers? We do have a quorum.
We do have a quorum present and can proceed with the meeting. So if you will, please stand with me for the prayer and pledge. Almighty great and honorable God, we thank you tonight for you being God. We thank you for coming into this meeting that we may conduct the business of your house as you would like for us to. I thank you for each and every mind represented tonight as we go forth in decisions, hard decisions, that have to be made to make sure that our community is safe and functioning efficiently. This is our servant's prayer and I'll say amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Any public comments?
I'm sorry, what?
Public comments?
No one's signed up.
Alright, so we will move on. You all have received a copy of the November 14, 2023 council meeting minutes. Are there any corrections that need to be made? If not, is there a motion to adopt? So move.
Second.
Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Alright, so the October 14 council meeting minutes are approved. Tonight, um, under my comments, I'm gonna start out and let Ms. Shinholster give you all an update from the past conference that we attended for the National League of Cities. What was that, last week in Atlanta, last week or the week before, in Atlanta, Georgia? You know, we're normally away, but this time we came to Georgia. So I'm gonna let her give you an update on that.
Okay, um, I too attended the National League of Cities. Excellent information. You got a chance to meet and mingle with council members from several cities, I mean, from all over the United States. I shared with you all some things last week about Oregon and people from cities in Oregon and Chicago and just, I sat every day at a different table with, that had eight people from eight different cities across the United States and we all got a chance to talk with each other. Some of the interesting things and the sessions that I attend, one of them was about sending out, using the fire department as a training ground to start sending out drones as first responders. I thought that was really interesting, something I had never thought about, but apparently other cities are getting into that. A lot of the classes dealt with the aspects of Google and AI and you all know that's the way of the world now and that's what we're going to. So they had several different sessions on that and the main topic of concern for almost everybody in every state was housing and the lack of affordable housing, the lack of what to do about providing housing for families and for working people that one of the people in one of the classes stood up and said, "So I can get my grown child and their family out of my house." Now, those were her comments as she stood to the microphone, so you know, a lot of people in the room echoed that same sentiment, but they were saying that because of the economy, because of the pricing on housing in every market, in every area, that this had developed into a problem that so many people are having to deal with and you know, it was just, it was, you know, we get to hear it all the time and we hear people talk about it and I just enjoyed finding out that it was not just, well, I knew it wasn't generic just to Millisville, but not just generic to Georgia. It's state by state by state, Texas, everybody's talking about the same thing. There were so many issues that we all share. I was also amazed that infrastructure and the discussion about aging infrastructure didn't come up and we didn't have any sessions about water or planting, but there were different things on global warming and how to deal with that. So it was very informative each and every day, every minute. We had booklets with, and the classes would last from 30 to 45 minutes each session and they started at 8 o'clock that morning and they ran all day, A, B, C, wherever you wanted to go. You had an opportunity to go listen and learn and then network with people later on. So I would advise any of the other council members, a lot of times you learn a lot just from getting out and getting away from home. I would advise any of them at any time to take the opportunity, either next year, it's going to be in Florida next year, so that's not too far away within driving distance. And, you know, try to attend because you really do learn a lot. It was eye-opening to me. That's all.
Oh, now y'all know when I'm away, I learn. That's why I come back with these little gadgets and say, "This is what I learned." As she said, we share a lot. I mean, I think I shared with Mr. Griffin, my eyes were open to the government AI. I'm just open anyway, period, to the AI thing now because it's just an area I'm interested in, I wanna get into it and looking at it is a wave of the future. So it was, it was a good conference. Thank you, Ms. Shinholster, for making that presentation. I thank Ms. Shinholster for bringing y'all some goodies back too.
I did give them to her.
You too, Mr. Jordan. I believe she brought you a goodie back too.
She says she brought a folder of stuff back talking with me.
Yeah, I got this. Complete with business cards and emails from some of them. They've already emailed me after talking with me, so yeah, you and I need to talk.
I think we kinda scared the lady for Norfolk. We were like, "Oh yeah, we need to make sure we get stuff."
I did go back and see her though. That day that you were gone, I went to Norfolk and talked with them about the AI problem here in Millisville. They were very receptive, listening and I told them that some of them were just unbearable and that, you know, that we realized that they didn't run through here anymore, but that was no excuse for not allowing cities and they said that they had lobby, she said that they had people lobbying in Congress to get them to allow local governments to encroach a little bit closer to their tracks so that, especially the ones that are no longer in use, so that they would be, we would be able to repair the roads. So that's not generic to us either. But she did listen and took our information down and I have received an email from her. So hopefully we can get somewhere with that.
Shinholster plays secretary, so you should have everything you need to know. Also, the other thing that I wanna bring before council tonight is that, you know, we brought up, Mr. Jordan, I hadn't had a chance to talk to you today, but we mentioned to the NAACP, bring us some suggestions of what you thought, of what they thought would make compatible suggestions for the information we gave them about the statute. So the Washington Street piece is still there with the hopes of being able to garner, I do have, they're down in my office, about 300 petitions, hoping that we can garner enough support to be able to move it. If you go down where Moore's is, right, coming down that way, going up towards Liberty on the opposite side of the road, I shared with them, it's still in city right-of-way. So if we move it there, the only piece there that you could say is that we're not putting it in a museum, we're not trying to put it in a cemetery. It's still in a very visible place where it would be toured simply because you have your trolley going around through there. We still have the piece of who actually owns it, who would be paying for it to be moved. So I do have that, that I'm presenting tonight, that I was asked to present and like I said, I do have the petition requests, the 300 petition requests. They're down in my office, I'll get them and give them to you before you leave tonight. And so maybe we can look at that and try to move forward before the year's out with that, at a minimum.
Sure, absolutely.
Mr. Jordan, have you been able to make any leeway on finding who owns that statue?
No, and I'll, to be honest with you, we have not pursued that further because at one time, there was discussion that we would, that the mayor would appoint a committee that would not only look at the issue of ownership, but look at the whole historical context of the monument. And I don't know if we're still planning to do that. We definitely can, we have, we have contact information on two historians that may be able to provide information, but we had just kind of, I don't wanna say shelved it, but we have, we definitely have held it back pending whether this committee was going to be appointed.
My reason for asking is that if, you know, I know that coming, you know, we asked the committee, the group that was here to come up with a location and they've done just what we've asked them to do, but what I'm afraid of is if we decided to move it to another place where there's, it's on the city's right-of-way, everyone is gonna assume that it belongs to the city.
Well, I think that's-
If we take on that responsibility. So that's my concern.
I'm not sure that we can move it without it belonging to the city.
Right, right.
But on the other hand too, if it belongs to someone else, then, you know, they would have to be, you know, there's some, there's clearly some options there. City is prepared to incur the expense of moving it to a location that is in compliance with the, with the statute, with the Georgia law, that it could be conveyed to the city as such. I'm not, I don't know what the city would want to take on that responsibility of relocating it, but I mean, that is, that is a possibility or if someone else is determined to own it and take responsibility for it, it can be either relocated at their expense with the city's consent on where to place it or be relocated somewhere that the owner, whoever that is, would choose to place it. But if we're not gonna appoint a committee, then we can move, we can definitely move forward to make that determination.
So I did try to appoint this committee.
Mm-hmm, I know you-
It fizzled out.
Right.
So in all fairness to them, because that's what we told them, is that bring a suggestion and I truly understand the concern, Mr. Denise, I have the same concern. We don't wanna take ownership of something that is not ours and I know that was one of the concerns was whether or not, whether or not it's in city's purview that we're still using taxpayers' dollars to continue to maintain the area around it. I know that was one of the-
That's true, but it has, you know, it has, there may not be a clear-cut answer to that from a legal standpoint. It has obviously been in the city's possession for, I think, at least the 1920. And so what we were trying to determine was the circumstances behind the relocation from the middle of Hancock Street, which is where it originally was placed, as I understand, to its location on Jefferson Street and who facilitated that. Obviously, if the city of Millisville expended city funds to relocate it at that point, that would be indicative of some form of ownership.
Um, can you-
It may be ownership by default because the folks that originally spent the money or caused it to be erected originally, we may not, you know, they may not be in existence any, anymore.
Well, I wanted to put it out there since it was brought back to me and in all fairness, I could tell them I would make sure I brought it up. So at this point, you have some historians, you wanna see if they wanna, see if they can dive in?
Mm-hmm, yes ma'am.
And see if, so we can take it to the next step, wherever we need to be. I really would love to either settle it or move on by the end of the year. No, well, we're right at the end of the year, sometime the first of the year, you know, but let's settle that. We got so much on our plate that in these last two years, you know, we wanna try to really attack and attack hard for the progression of the city of Millisville. So if you wanna dive into that?
Yeah, we can move forward and like I said, we've already identified these individuals, so assuming that they're willing to be retained and participate, we will go from there and then I'll bring that back to you before we actually commit to spend any city funds and then y'all can approve that.
Okay. I don't think I have another comment that I can think of right off my head tonight. So the next thing on the agenda was supposed to be the housing authority update and it has been rescheduled to after the first of the year. Is that correct, Mr.?
Till the 9th, actually, January 9th.
January 9th, okay. Alright, so at this time, I'm gonna recognize Mr. Griffin for his city manager's report.
Alright, thank you, Mayor. I just wanna go over and give you just a little more information on some things that you're gonna be voting on tonight. Obviously, you have seen these before and I just wanna make sure that if you, if you have any questions, I can answer those for you. Resolution 2311-45 is a resolution to authorize an agreement with Georgia Safe Sidewalks. We have, we have had a contract with Georgia Safe Sidewalks every year that at least 2018. This was actually an entity that Frank Dogg brought to us, the Public Works Director, and they, they basically survey city sidewalks and determine where there are areas that are trip hazards, either from settling of concrete, from tree roots pushing the concrete up, whatever the case may be. And then they go in, in a procedure that utilizes a laser for very specific measurements to then saw cut the concrete in the area where it is, for lack of a better word, jacked up in sidewalk. And that obviously helps keep our sidewalks safer. We typically contract with them at the $10,000 level, which is in the agreement that's in your packet tonight. And the first part of that is a survey of the area that has not been surveyed before or adjustments has not been made and then they basically are on about a five-year rotation in terms of getting all the way around the city. I think it's money well-spent, it helps us in terms of liability and just making our sidewalks safer, so I would encourage you to approve that tonight so that they can get started on the, pretty soon after the first of the year. If you've ever seen an area where they have repaired it, it's very obvious, but as opposed to grinding, which oftentimes will cause the aggregate in concrete to release and then you have a bigger problem than you had before, this saw cutting that they do keeps most of the aggregate in the concrete intact, so it continues to be a solid surface. So it's, it's, it's good work for what they do. Also, resolution R231146, I believe it was three meetings ago, Rachel McGurra from Enterprise Fleet Management came and gave you all a presentation and this is a resolution to authorize that agreement. If you can, if you remember, the presentation was for vehicle leasing and management services. Actually, it was four meetings ago now, I see on my notes, but while the, while the leasing of vehicles is important in this agreement in terms of turning our vehicles over every three to five years, which we do not do now, what's even more important to me is the maintenance piece of that and the fact that that maintenance pieces, or those maintenance pieces on our vehicles will be scheduled based on a dashboard that they have and I'm excited about what it's gonna enable us to do. I think we have some issues, quite frankly, internally with maintaining our vehicles as well as they need to be maintained and it's getting more and more difficult to do two things. Number one, it's getting more and more difficult to hire an ASC certified mechanic when one can go to work at a car dealership and make a hundred thousand dollars a year. It's difficult to get them to come work with the city for 50. And it's also getting more and more difficult to be able to afford the equipment that's needed. If you know anything about vehicle repair, you basically have to have a piece of machinery for every model vehicle that you have and that's getting to the point where it's cost prohibitive. So this, this will give us the opportunity to, to maintain those vehicles and to rotate some additional vehicles into the fleet. If you remember the analysis she gave us, we will not have any actual vehicle cost until after July 1 of '24 and we will lease at that point in time 29 vehicles and then we will go 20, in 2025 to lease 25, in 2026, 10, 2027, 12, and 2028, 13. But also keep in mind that we have, we have equity in our owned vehicles now and Enterprise Fleet Management will also be responsible for when those are taken out of service, selling those and then putting those, that equity back into our plan. So we are finding ourselves having to use outside agencies to maintain our vehicles already because of mainly of the two issues that I just mentioned and this will give us the opportunity to, to get those vehicles maintained by contractors in the city as part of this plan.
Mr. Griffin?
Yes, ma'am.
Let me ask you a question about that. Well, I agree with everything that you've said wholeheartedly. My only question is, is this the only vendor that you looked at because there were some at the, and I think I have some information in this envelope, that were there at the National League of Cities that do the same thing, so Enterprise isn't like the only vendor? And sometimes I hate to make a decision based on a presentation and then turn right back around, don't have anything to compare it to. And I, you know, I thought that before we decided to put, and I apologize for not calling you, I got really busy with Thanksgiving and doctor's appointments earlier this weekend and hadn't thought about it, but I looked back over that stuff that she gave us and I just was not satisfied with the other cities that, there were not that many cities represented on there. And I, you know, I'm always thinking if it's a good thing, then you're gonna see more than one city doing it and you're gonna see a longer list of references and just my opinion, I can't speak for everybody else, but she didn't have that many. And maybe she just didn't add that many on her list, but I didn't see that many.
She did not, she tried to give us some areas that were near us in terms of geography and size. I did look at two other potential vendors.
But you didn't provide us that information.
Well, because I didn't get anything from those two vendors. And so when I sent out information asking for that and I don't get it back, then my opinion is the people who come back with the information are the ones that we need to look at. I, I don't think we should necessarily beg people for information if it's a request and we don't get it, but-
I'd just like to, you know, it's just that I'd just like to make an informed decision.
Sure.
Not, not a decision just based on what somebody said, 'cause somebody can tell you anything and then you go with it and I've been around here long enough to know we make decisions, you know, getting out of the garbage business, 'cause somebody came in and told us that and that was something where we might should have looked at a little bit further while we still own garbage trucks and, you know, just, that's just an example. I'm not saying go back to that.
There may be a vendor that could do this same thing, but I don't think we can maintain the vehicles any cheaper than what they're showing here in-house, mainly because of the two things that I just mentioned and, but, you know, we can, we can certainly, we can certainly find, I can certainly reach out to some other folks who, you know, GMA has a lease program, but they don't do fleet maintenance.
Right, right.
That's the piece that's, of it that's most important, important to me. The main reason we were able to come back to them, other than the fact that they responded, is that they are part of the sole source group that, that enables us to talk to them without going through an actual bid process, but we can certainly get, if you, if you will tell me some folks you wanna hear from, then I'll certainly work to get the information.
Oh, and just FYI, you know, having been a state procurement officer as well, just because they are sole source doesn't mean that they're the only source. They're just-
Hello, I'm aware of that.
Okay, so I just wanted to make, you know, when, when you say that, other people might not be aware that when you say sole source, they're not the only source that provides that service, but like I said, I can only speak for Denise about how I feel and not for, not for anybody else, but I thought I'd ask anyway. Thank you.
Hey, this is the same group that's currently providing the service for the county, is that correct?
That's correct, that's correct.
And they've been with them for a little over one budget cycle?
I think they started with this current budget cycle, so they're about to finish this budget cycle.
What, have you received any feedback from our peers at the county?
I have, I have talked to Ms. Hudson as well as some folks with the Sheriff's Department and they've been pleased. Their only, their only issue was that they did not get the leased vehicles that they were anticipating in as timely of a manner as they thought they should have, but that was driven by whether the vehicles were available in the market as opposed to anything that Enterprise did, that was. Based on what Ms. McGurra told me, I did not, I did not ask the county if they thought that was correct or not, but I did ask Ms. McGurra that question when that was the only thing that the county brought up.
Anybody else want to comment? Ms. Map? Talk to me. Okay.
Okay. I'll move on to resolution 231147. I have brought a lot of information to y'all in the four years that you've allowed me to be your city manager. This one may be the one that I'm the happiest about. And that is replacing the equipment at Central City Park. You have seen the quote, unfortunately, it does not come cheap, but this will replace the three footprint areas at Central City Park, which are a swing area, a play area for two through five-year-olds and then a play area for five- area, a play area for two through five-year-olds, and then a play area for five through twelve-year-olds. There will be a little bit of additional cost to this that will not be part of the Play South contract, because we will also be replacing the chain link fences around the areas. I don't want to put this in that chain link fence with the way the chain link fence looked. But I'm excited about this. I hope you all are excited about it. It's obviously something that we've been working on and trying to find the funds to do for quite some time. If you all are in favor of the equipment as it is, my direction from you tonight, other than saying get Play South starting, is to determine whether we want the green or the tan rubberized material that will be under the play areas. I think I shared with you my report. I'm partial to the tan. The previous one I showed you was red. It was too much red. But if you all would give me your opinion there, then that's certainly what we'll go with, and I'm happy to. And this is a turnkey job. We may be able to, and I have not had a conversation with Mr. Thomas about this, to see if he's going to have the manpower in order to be able to do it. But we may have the opportunity to save the thirty-two thousand five hundred dollars that's a part of the quote for demo. If our Public Works folks do the demo for us, and he has already agreed to make that a change on the contract, if we do that. So that is what we will be able to possibly save. You know, the good thing about demo is you don't have to, for the most part, at least with what's happening here, you don't have to worry about the shape that things are in once you pull it up. So they may be able to do it fairly quickly with some heavy equipment. And that fence is going to be taken down anyway. But this will be a turnkey job either from the demo point forward or from the point that the equipment has been demoed and the new equipment is installed.
If we get Public Works to do that in-house, they should go ahead and take care of the isometric workout equipment that's a little further down. Because that is a walking advertisement for a tetanus shot.
We may also have them bring some of those equipment over to your house, Mr. Griffith. You were a youngster when it was installed.
Memories.
I'll run it right into Fish and Creek.
So from the time they start to finish, it's about how many days?
From the time that they actually start the installation, it is three to five weeks, depending on the weather. That is, as you can see on the quote, a rubberized mat. He originally, in the information that I shared with y'all two weeks ago, he originally had only six swings and showed mulch in the swing area. I asked him to add another bank of two swings for that and put rubberized down there as well, so that we did not have to maintain the mulch. But also the fact that, as you can see, especially in the swing area, there are, there is, are swings for handicapped individuals. And there's a ramp there that you can see up to that swing area. I felt like that would be better in terms of mobility issues, to have that as part of the rubberized surface as opposed to mulch.
I just want to know that, once you say, we're doing this, we're doing this, and it's done in X, Y, Z days, so that we don't get bombarded.
Well, I don't know that I can say X, Y, Z days. I mean, you know, it's winter time and it's raining, so.
And that's a good time to do it. Hopefully, that the rain will hold up.
That's exactly right. And I, that was, I would like to say I planned it that way, but that just kind of accidentally happened. But I'm excited about the possibility of it happening. Also, there are, I think there's some potential for us to have the need for some call work sessions in January to talk about a couple of different things, about the potential of issuing a bond for water treatment and wastewater treatment plant. Also, I have been in touch with Jim Elliott since I met with y'all last Tuesday night. He and I are looking at the possibility of him coming to a call work session on January sixteenth. I'd like for him to come at a time when it's not a regular meeting, because I think we may want to talk to him longer than we may have time available at a regular meeting. But obviously, there'll be a call meeting that will be announced to the public. So I will be in touch with you all in my future reports, just to make sure that the dates, that we may look at those happening are good for y'all. That's all I have, Mayor.
Right. So at this time, we're going to move to our old business. And tonight, we have the third and final public hearing regarding a public comment regarding the proposed millage rate being increased from ten point twelve mils to twelve point twelve mils on the taxes levied on real and personal property assessed within the corporate limits of the city of Millageville. One mil represents forty dollars for every one hundred thousand dollars of assets value of property. As with the first two public hearings, the procedure for the conducting this third and final hearing will be as follows. The chair will first determine that the public hearing has been properly advertised. The chair will ask the clerk to read the proposed ordinance by caption. The chair will then recognize anyone who wishes to speak regarding the proposed millage rate increase. And finally, anyone who wishes to speak regarding a millage rate increase is encouraged to do so. As you are recognized, I will ask that you come to the podium and to make your remarks and give your name and address for the records. Mr. Clerk, has this public hearing been properly posted and advertised?
It has been, Mayor.
I will ask the clerk to please read the ordinance by caption.
Ordinance O 231115, an ordinance to levy and assess taxes at twelve point one-two mils for the support of the mayor and alderman of the city of Millageville for the 2023 tax year and to provide for the collection of the same.
Is there anyone present who wishes to speak on the proposed millage rate? You may stand to the, step to the podium, sir, give your name and your address for the record.
My name is Ricky Giles. I live at 205 Lake Shore Circle. And I spoke a couple of weeks ago, and I just had a few things to add. I hope y'all's minds aren't already made up. I hope, I don't know how many speakers will be tonight, two or three, but I hope y'all take in consideration what we have to say. Reading it in the paper lately, I do understand that the city employees need raises, but I still don't understand why we have to have a property rate increase. Because in 2022, the county reassessed the properties, and all our rates went up last year. Then now the T-Splash just got voted in, and I'm reading that y'all are going to get either thirty-five or thirty-nine percent of that money. The county's reassessing the properties now. So, and, you know, everybody knows property values are up, so it's going to go up again next year. Prices have all gone up on the stores, on most everything. So y'all's sales tax revenue should be up this year over last year. There has been, I don't know how much, but there has been new construction within the city. So the tax base, it should be growing. Places should be of more value. So why, why do we have to just punish the property owners? Is there any other way? And I think one way, one reason that everybody just says go up on the millage rate is because I see like right now, it's an easy way for y'all to do it. You don't get much people, much backlash. I mean, it's hardly nobody here. I've asked some other people, why don't y'all come and speak? And they say you can't beat the government. So they just give up. But anyway, I'm just asking y'all to please vote no.
My name's Wesley Millholland. I live at 278 Bull Hill Road in Haddock. And the last time I was here, about two weeks ago, it was a big crowd. I asked, why does the city not have to do what the citizens do? Sit down with their pen and decide where to spend the money and cut back here to make ends meet? I told you, you know, citizens can't go to their boss and just demand more money like the city can do. Mr. Giles just mentioned assessments. I think we've had two assessments in the last five years, and we're under another assessment right now, which will be the third time we've had to pay more property taxes in the last five years. If you go up on the millage rate today, we not only pay more this year, then to go up another, let's just throw a number out there, say twenty or thirty percent next year, we pay even more next year. I would ask you, like Mr. Giles said, explore other options. There's got to be other options than just pulling from property owners. Also, why, when we budget all year for a certain number, when we have to budget, we go a lot of money in property taxes. We have to budget for these, this money. The last minute, a week before, or two weeks, or three weeks before, tax bills come out, the city tries to go up on us. We've already budgeted. I mean, this isn't forty or eighty dollars. This is thousands upon thousands of dollars for us. It almost be like y'all going out to eat at Longhorn, ordering your steak, and in between the time of you ordering your food, you get your food, you eat it, and all of a sudden the manager goes, oh, wait a minute, our power bill was high last month. We need to charge him a little more. And then when you get your bill, it's like, ain't what I agreed to. Fairly similar to that, in my opinion. I'm asking you to vote no. I will say that if you vote yes, when I send my notices out for increases to all my tenants, I will list y'all and y'all's names and contact information as one of the reasons for rent increases. And why I'm going to do that is I think y'all need to hear the stories that I have to hear on a daily basis from my tenants about how, can I send you a hundred dollars this week, another hundred dollars next week? I'm working two jobs. I started a third one, and I don't get paid for it for two weeks. They have to hold a weekend hole. All these stories that I have to hear, and I sympathize with them. I hate going up, I told you three weeks ago, I had not gone up on rent in twenty years until last year. These are tough times and not a time to increase the burden on the citizens of Millageville. So I will ask you to please vote no.
So, Mr. Griffin, you want to go next, since they are the only two here to speak?
Well, they're just, I mean, I.
Wait a minute, let me make sure, because I see another, a different face. Are you here to speak? Okay, I'm sorry.
I really don't have any comment other than to just make a couple of statements of fact. The city's tax digest actually went down this year. It went down by about eight million dollars. If you look at the five-year history for county's, county digest, the county's digest actually went up. The net digest for the county went up one point three million dollars this year. And in the grand scheme of things, the way tax digests work, that's not a lot, not a lot of money. But it did enable the county to raise more revenue this year by going up a very minimal amount on their millage rate. They did go up on their millage rate this year. They went from nine point nine-three to ten point zero-two. And that as well is a small, small increase. But it will increase the amount of taxes that they generate by about one point one percent, which for them is probably about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, somewhere between a hundred and twenty-five and a hundred and fifty, if I had to guess. So in terms of the tax digest for the city this year, it did actually go down. And if we don't go up on the millage rate by some amount, we will not even generate the same amount of revenue that we did last year. We will actually generate about eighty-eight thousand dollars less than we did last year. And the city is not immune to what y'all are dealing with and to what citizens are dealing with in terms of prices going up, in terms of wages going up. In terms of your budgeting comment, I'll just simply say that we have to pass our millage rate once we get the digest from the county and we get it at the same time that they put their digest out. The county is on an annual budget, January to December budget. We're on a fiscal year budget from July 1 to June 30th. That's the reason that millage rate decisions are made in a little bit different manner. But we do have to make sure that proper notification is made and to fall within the requirements of state law, and we have done that. But it's, you talked about sharpening your pencil. I mean, we could sharpen our pencil, but if we sharpen our pencil, then we look at services that are not offered. That's the only way to sharpen our pencil. And I don't think, I don't think anybody, and I probably shouldn't speak for them, but I don't think anybody on this dice likes doing this. But I think it's just something that I have shared with them, that in my opinion, in order for the city to remain solvent and be able to do what's necessary from a service delivery standpoint over the next fiscal year, we've got to generate additional revenue. Mayor's responsible for that.
What was?
Mr. Giles, one of the things you asked a question.
Stand up, Mr. Giles, and come back to the podium, please. Come back to the podium.
You said the digest came down eighty-eight thousand dollars.
No, the digest came down over eight million.
Eight million and eighty-eight, around eighty-eight thousand in revenue. Okay, with the reassessments that we're having, that they're proceeding with now, more than likely it's going to go up. And you're getting the T-Splash money, and then you should be getting more sales tax money because of inflation. So next year, are y'all going to have a meeting to go back down?
That's always the possibility of discussion.
See, I always feel like the more money you get, the more money you spend. It's like, hey, we got an extra fifty thousand dollars or actually two hundred thousand. Let's just spend it. But it's not y'all's money. It's all the property owners. Most of the property owners are just afraid to come over here and speak their mind.
Let me share with you, in order to answer that, if we get extra money, we don't always just spend it.
But you don't give it back.
Last year, in the last fiscal year, we ended up spending three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars less than was budgeted for FY 2122. And what happened with that was that money was put in a reserve area to help us with stormwater infrastructure that we're working on.
Okay.
As hard as our water and sewer infrastructure. So I mean, I'm not, you know, I'm not going to get in an argument with you about it tonight. I'm just going to state fact. And that fact is, we don't always spend money we get, okay? We are, we know that there may come a time when we've got to be ready for a rainy day. And that three hundred and twenty-four thousand dollars less that we spent in the last budget than was budgeted went into a reserve in order to be able to take care of that rainy day. You said, you said property assessments may go back, will go up. They probably very well may, but we can't be guaranteed that, especially on the city's side, when we've seen it go down this year, which is the first year it's gone down, at least since 2018.
Okay, so this year was your rainy day, you were eighty-eight thousand dollars short. But the year before, you were three hundred and something thousand dollars over. So it seemed like you were prepared for your rainy day.
You know how long the city could operate on two hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
I didn't say that was forever. You said that was in the reserve. Look, I'm saying, I understand with a county, a business, or a family, you can always spend extra money. Most people don't save for the rainy day, and I applaud you for doing that, not just throwing it away. But I'm just saying, enough's enough. I mean, I don't even think there should be a city tax. Anybody that looks, lives in the city is punished for living in the city. Anybody that looks, lives in the city is punished for living in the city by having an extra tax, 'cause even the people in the city have to pay a county tax. This is just like double taxation. What do I get for it?
Police, fire, public safety.
Right, I get police fire in the county, okay? That's all good. The only thing I get from the city is they'll come by in a truck and pick up limbs. That's the only thing I get at my city properties.
Mr. Giles, can I ask you a question? Where are your properties located?
I got them, I got, well, most of mine are in the city. I got them on Warren Street. I got them at Duplex City. I got them behind Craig Massey's Old Real Estate, behind the Circle K. That's the majority. I got them on Lake Drive, and I got houses scattered out, um, in Riverview. That's the majority.
Do you have street lights where your rental properties are?
I don't know.
Yes, they do.
I think I do.
Because the majority have them that he's named, and they are in my district, uh, and they do have street lighting, they have, um, police protection, they have fire protection. And they, yeah, they have a lot, lot that, um, the city provides for them.
Listen, I'm, I'm not trying to talk the city down, 'cause I love this town. I'll never move, okay? I love this place. I, I promote it to other people. One of the promotions I learned from another person, they, the guy moved here from Ohio, and he told me the reason he loved Baldwin County, he could get in his car at six o'clock in the morning and be in the mountains by lunch, or be at the ocean by lunch.
That's right.
And it was a great place. We had colleges here and we had a lake here. I think this is a great place to live, but I understand enough's enough. I don't, you know, I don't know how y'all are gonna vote tonight. I hope you vote no, but you vote yes, yes, I'll pay the bill.
But I want, do wanna clarify something, 'cause you mentioned it twice. You said something about the transportation tax and the sales tax. You do understand that those particular taxes are earmarked for, that we can only spend on certain things. They're not put into the, uh, general operating fund for the city to, for us to operate day, daily.
That's on the T-Splash, right?
Those things, yeah, the, the T-Splash, uh-huh. That's a transportation tax, and it can only be spent on certain things, and the sales tax can only be spent on certain things. So we don't just, even though you may see that money coming in, we can't just spend it, um, to keep your property taxes from going down. We can roll it back. And what we do, what we've done in years when our digest was high, we've, we've rolled it, rolled your taxes back because of the sales tax. And, and we always take that into consideration whenever we are looking at increasing the, the tax millage rate. And if you look back at the history of the city, we don't raise taxes that often. We very seldom raise property taxes, simply because we'd rather find other ways to do, do what we do. And we, and, and for years, our department heads have spent, just, they have not spent very much of their money in their budgets, because we've always been frugal with it and then making sure that we didn't spend too much so that we wouldn't go over budget. That's, that's what our department heads do, and that's what the city has always done so that we can be, uh, make sure that we don't waste and don't ask the taxpayers for too much.
I understand, and I've always heard that y'all are frugal with, with your money. I've heard y'all do a good job managing the money. And I understand that the sales tax and the T-Splash are earmarked for certain things. But if it wasn't for that, y'all would be having to pay for that from somewhere.
Right, and your taxes would be higher.
Or, or right, or it wouldn't be done.
You'd have potholes, you'd have everything, all kinds of problems.
Instead of y'all having to worry about money for that, it's gonna be coming in additionally. Look, I, I'm just gonna say, I'm against the tax. I've never, I think the property tax, I said before, is the most unfair tax that there, there could possibly be. And yes, whatever you put on my bill, I'm gonna pay it. That don't mean I gotta like it, but I'll pay it, okay? And I'm just asking, I hope y'all would vote no.
Yeah, I respect that. Thank you.
Any other council member wanting to make a comment before we move on?
I'd just like to say this, Mayor. Um, the next budget cycle will begin in the spring of next year, typically somewhere between March, April, and May. Y'all are welcome to come in, take a look at the budget, and you tell us where we'd like to make those cuts. Should it be in the police department, the fire department, sewage treatment, water treatment? You're welcome to come and join us. Look through. Help us make that hard decision if you think that it's so easy to tighten the belt. Please come in and participate.
It's not.
Well, you're welcome and invited to come back for that. We'll be here in the spring, and you're welcome to join us then.
So, um, thank you all for coming and giving us your thoughts on how you feel. Um, Ms. Shinholster's, I got my little notes, what I wanted to say. Ms. Shinholster's already addressed that. Mr. Reynolds have already addressed, I got, and then he even gave out some pointers the last meeting as how you can try to go to the county and get your tax assessments and all that reduced. He and I both share a same, uh, occupation of real estate, been in real estate twenty-some years. And I do know that when you got into that business of being a, a property owner, you know, there was thoughts of risk and how things would go up and down when you got in it. I've, I've been in it myself, being a property manager as a realtor, didn't like it, uh, didn't do it long, because I felt like just what you're saying, you gotta evict, you gotta put this out, person out. But as you come into us tonight saying, you know, you're having to work with people, they call you, they say, you know, I don't have it, my light's getting turned off, we hear the same stories that you hear. We understand, we feel the same pain, all of us up here are property owners. So when our taxes go up, guess what? Our bills go up, just like yours. But at the end of the day, it's not just one or two people that we gotta consider. We have a whole community, a whole city. And if, you know, county, they, yes, they did a reassessment, but they did one that was generated by law. Every ten years, they have to do that assessment. So if the county has to continuously look at how they're gonna have to pay their bills, then that's fair game for the city as well. We gotta keep the police department running, we gotta keep the fire department running, we gotta keep water, and you all know that we have a lot of problems, and we're trying to, uh, correct those problems that we have with the water now. Um, I wish that, as you all have sat down evidently and put your pen to the paper, that as Mr. Reynolds said, you would come up here and see what we're doing with that budget and how we're squeezing and how we're trying, and yet we gotta keep happy employees, we gotta keep, uh, efficient employees that can do these tasks from day to day. And as you, I think you mentioned last time about the salary, yes, everybody deserves to be paid adequately. You know, that's why I think that the government as a whole went up and said that, um, everybody need to be above a wage level, which was fifteen dollars an hour. So we do understand, and we thank you for your concerns tonight and bringing them to us. So if there be no other, um, comments on that, uh, this concludes the public hearing on ordinance O-2311-15. This is also the second reading of this ordinance, and we are ready to take a vote. Is there a motion on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Is there any discussion?
Yeah, now, I need some clarification. That's the open end, and so a motion to approve.
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve, I'm sorry, 'cause you didn't put, you didn't write that. Okay, is there any discussion? All right, I'll ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
All right, motion is approved. We move to new business, and I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2311-45 by caption.
A resolution to authorize a contract with Georgia Safe Sidewalks for sidewalk trip hazard mitigation and Americans with disabilities at compliance on portions of sidewalks throughout the city of Millageville.
Is there a motion to adopt? So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Unless clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Right, the motion, um, the resolution is adopted. Uh, I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2311-46 by caption.
A resolution to authorize an agreement with Enterprise Fleet Maintenance to provide fleet maintenance, vehicle rotation leases, and roadside assistance for all city of Millageville vehicles.
I guess I'm trying to find my thought process here, since we had spoken about this and you were gonna get with some more information, or did we wanna move, or you, okay? Okay. Is there a motion to adopt?
So moved.
All right, any discussion? Unless clerk to please call the roll. Yeah, somebody said.
Ms. Map did.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
No.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
The, uh, resolution is passed. I will ask the clerk to read resolution R-2311-14 by caption.
It should be forty-seven.
Sorry, I'm looking at fourteen, forty-seven, I'm sorry.
No typo, okay.
No, you hit it right.
A resolution to authorize an agreement with Play South Playground Creators to install new playground equipment in Central City Park.
All right, is there a motion to adopt? So moved. Is there any discussion? Unless clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm waiting on one more person to call.
See, manager say I'll, this one.
I'm gonna ask the clerk to read resolution R-2311-48. That's bad when you're listening for something.
Resolution R-2311-48, a resolution to approve alcohol license renewal applications as set forth on the attached Exhibit A for the calendar year 2024.
Is there a motion to adopt?
Moved, we approve.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Unless clerk to please call the roll.
Dr. Lee?
Aye.
Ms. Shinholster?
Aye.
Mr. Reynolds?
Aye.
Ms. Map?
Aye.
All right, the resolution is approved. There are no, um, new alcohol license applications or appointments that need to be approved tonight. However, at this time, I need a motion to go into closed session.
Madam Mayor, for what purpose?
A personnel matter.
Second.
So that was a map?
A personnel matter, personnel.
Dr. Lee, motion personnel matter, second. Reynolds.
Okay.
So at this time, we're gonna go into closed session. We will be back at the completion of it. Welcome to stay. So then we will be back shortly.
Okay, this is to go back in open, uh, open session. Dr. Lee?
Here.
Ms. Shinholster?
Here.
Mr. Reynolds?
Here.
Ms. Map?
Here.
All right, um, that concludes the items on the agenda. Does anyone on council have any comments or announcements?
Uh, make sure you run your water tonight. Let's get down to twenty-seven.
That's right.
Mayor, let me just, let me also say, uh, Main Street is watching the weather, uh, to determine how large the Christmas tree lighting will be Friday night. It may be simply plugging in the tree and going home and drying out, um, or, uh, depending on what the weather looks like, they, they will have the full, uh, cadre of activities as they're planning to do, but they will make that decision on Thursday, and we will let everybody know what that decision is, so.
I understand the exchange club is looking at the weather.
It's monitoring the weather, but as of now, it will go as planned.
All right. If there's no other, uh, announcement, this meeting is.
Motion to adjourn.
It's where you at.
Second.
Second. Motion, meeting adjourned. Y'all down there talking, we trying to get a motion.
Mr. Milton Thomas, I have a question.